hereby call this meeting to order. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the board of directors of the district to be held at 105 Ford Road, April 28th at 5:30. This notice is posted at the office of the district on April 22nd at 4:00 P.M. I call the meeting to order and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, please bless this day and let us have a successful meeting where we continue to learn and just get more involved with the district and say thank you to Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Charles.
How is everybody today? Good?
Good.
Hi, Carlos. Hello to all our other esteemed gentlemen and women. Does anybody have a public comment? This is your invitation. Hearing none, we'll move on. Item four, consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop meeting and the regular meeting from April 14th.
Still moved.
On favor, I. Item five, general manager's report.
I have a little report on the COVID here that is for the month of April. We have three tested, one negative, and then two recovered. So that's all we have, smaller, it's getting smaller and smaller. So we continue to follow through with the protocols and emphasize safety and being distancing and then face mask. I don't know when we can get rid of this, but it seems like, I felt like I got it again this past weekend, but it's just Dr. Tommy's sinuses and allergies, so that's all it was.
My daughter got the flu, so there's actually a flu now again, so.
Yes, it's been going around.
Yep, so going on to the next one on the water levels at the reservoirs, they're going down. It looks like 1% per week dropping, we're at 40.5 right now. And it seems like we may have a big bit of rain this coming weekend, but we're just hoping it rains to the west of Texas, that's where all the water fills back into the reservoirs, all the lakes up there in the west side of Texas. And the Amistad and Falcon are the ones, the lowest part of the southern part of Texas, so we're the last ones to get the water in there. But we're still the same on the water conservation, still the same, just volunteer.
Carlos, if I may. I fielded a couple of questions from the public regarding conservation requests based on these reservoirs and lakes being low. The nature of the question is, we're pretty much the last person in line. So if there's water getting here, why would we conserve, I guess? I don't, I didn't really know how to handle the question when it was asked to me in the middle of the day. But the point being, you know, the interpretation of the customer of ours was maybe there's one person in line after us. Is Brownsville after us in the, or are we the last one in line?
Oh, Brownsville is the last one.
Okay.
To pick up the water and there might be another one, Omito, and then Bayview, like Bayview area.
Okay, so we're not the last in line, there's a couple.
Yeah, there's about three, three after us, we're not the last ones. We're closer to the San Benito area, because our pipeline, if y'all remember.
That's the one you showed us that day, a couple of years ago, up off the river up there, right?
Right, that's the one, as you saw, the river's not that big.
Yeah, it's small.
Real grandy, the way it sounds, but it's just small.
But as far as the, where the water master regulates allocation, it's really not dependent on, you know, who's located downstream from whom. It's just that authorization, the water rights are like bank accounts. So you gotta make sure you gotta balance in that account to keep getting water off that river. And so essentially, since we're one of the areas that are municipal, but we do get prorated, I mean, that's really where we gotta make sure we maintain a positive balance in that account.
You probably explained to the public that it's not like the river literally running out of water. Who's farther down the river gets what's there, is just the amount of water rights that you have.
So who determines that?
Because the water master.
Yeah, but one of the things I understood, so why, is there a legislative fix for it that if we're dumping, I'll just make up a number, 100,000 gallons a day, I'm just picking. 100,000 gallons a day are going into the ocean and everybody along the river wishes they had more water. Why does the water master say, hey, everybody, based on your water rights, everybody can draw an extra, you know, 5,000 gallons? Why, so that it doesn't go into the ocean and nobody gets it? So why I complain about not having enough water everywhere on the river and yet we're dumping a bunch of water into the ocean?
Yeah, there is a minimum stream flow requirement for an environmental standpoint. So I mean, that's part of what they take into account and I mean, the.
May points, well, you're speculating basically on that, because you don't know exactly.
Is there water really being dumped into the bay, like that gets cleaned? Like explain that to the public too, because again, this isn't necessarily as much for Adam and I, it's for all those that we can tell. You know, watch our last board meeting and there's your answer.
There is not a whole lot of water being dumped to the Gulf and it goes to the Gulf, not the bay. The Gulf is where it's directly out to the sea.
Yeah, so if we don't grab it out of Rio Grande, I used to catch bait on the Rio, right where it went in.
It's really not a whole lot dumping out, just very little, minimal, I guess, for environmental purposes where it has to flow some, some, but not, it's not a whole lot. If you go out there, you get, there's places where you can walk across, because there's not a lot of water going through it.
This is a big complicated topic, we could, I could do a probably seminar if you're really interested. Like how the water is allocated, what, how, what's Mexico's relation to this whole thing, you know?
Have you ever heard this concept discussed before about the fact that there is water going into the ocean that is not collected along the river?
Like that the river actually meets the ocean and it's not all.
Yeah.
I mean, there's environmental issues with that, what they were saying, because of the, I mean, but it's complicated, I don't have all the answers right now, but I can, I can put it through the replay.
Then there's another issue that if the water needs to get to our place, we need somebody to carry it with us. We're the only ones ordering 100,000 gallons for one day. And if you send it out and it's not gonna get here because of the distance, we need somebody else to help us carry it too. They charge you for that and it is complicated.
No doubt it's complicated, I know it's.
Long river.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's oversizing. I just, I wonder how much actually goes into the ocean every single day.
I can find out.
I wonder, I wonder if somebody knows, like, oh yeah, enough to fill one of these cups. Probably a lot more than.
I didn't mean, I'm sorry for bogging down your presentation.
I've been asked that before too.
It's, it's, it's a, there that we can talk about, it's there.
I'm all in, let's add that maybe to the next board meeting and then we can refer.
That's fine.
Couple of board meetings from now, like add a future agenda item and then we can reference that specific meeting for.
Just overall, just sort of like general knowledge of how water out change towards the Rio Grande, that you can speak to the public about it.
I would love that.
And there may be an answer to the main question, which is, why do we allow any water to be dumped into the ocean when all of us wish we had a lot?
Yeah, there is a minimum environmental stream flow requirement.
Which is an arbitrary thing that we decide on as a state, like hey, here's the environmental thing we all agree that we must do, right? Environmental regulations are just a bunch of guys get together and pass a law and that's what the regulation. So regulations can be changed.
Right, yeah.
Might be federal, I mean, it could be international.
Yeah, financially, so, so yeah, like, like say the stream flow report from April 19th, 2021, there were 223 cubic feet per second flowing in the river at Brownsville. So I mean, I don't know if that's upstream or downstream with their diversion point, but that's the general amount of flow that's.
223 cubic feet per second?
Right.
Doesn't that's like a ton of water?
Um, like when, when, when the, just to kind of give you some bearing, like if there's a major flood and the bullet gates and Falcon are fully open, the flow rate at this part of the river would be about 22,000 CFS. And, and the flow today is at 200. So that's kind of, that's when you're at the level.
So it's only 1% of like.
Yeah.
100% of that, 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 which is something that's interesting. I don't know why as a state or as anything, you let any unnecessary water go to both ways in the ocean. The ocean wants pretty full water, so don't worry about what water.
Yeah, sure, it has.
But more important, you'll get a urgent and then get a report.
I haven't had a, once you guys settle that water. All right, that it, Carlos?
That's it.
Okay.
Dropping about 1% per week.
We will pray that those storms that are dumping water today and tomorrow and this weekend help, yeah. Item six, consider and discuss for possible approval a resolution adapting our vice personnel policy. And you're back. You stay up there.
Okay, on this resolution, it's a, some of this is legal stuff that needs to be in, in the policy. And it's just one word added to it, if you see, and then a couple of, is voluntary separation, voluntary separation. And then the last one is actually the way if we should pay the employee if they're terminated, voluntary or involuntary, that we have to pay them in that manner, which is the very bottom part of it, and human resources is the one that we need at section 1103, the department that takes care of it. Do you have any questions on that? But this, and then on one of the additional, on page 13, it says, section 512, which is upon voluntary separation from the district, that the employees would would wanna, well, I guess we came up with it, if the board would wanna pay the employees that leave in good term, the longevity, which is an amount of, I think it's $48 per year. That, that's one of them that, that's a decision the board would want to decide on that. That's not something legal that has to be paid, but it's up to the board. And upon the 603, that's the page 15, it's also, it's only for retirement purposes or death, but then if the board decides to do voluntary separation, which means that the employees in good terms, they can get paid sick pay also upon separation.
Can you explain where this, what part of this?
Employees that, that have been leaving, somehow or another, they were getting paid well back before our, our taking over the administration part. And then all of a sudden, there's a, not in the policy. So we didn't pay them after that for leaving the district in good term. So we decided that the board would like to go back and keep paying the employees that part. I don't know how far back was it, but they would get paid, maybe. But then when we came in, we said, no, it's not supposed to get.
They give it.
People like retire or leave the district.
So it's only longevity pay or it's every?
So because the people on the.
Mary's our HR, but.
We know the Mary.
Yes, employees that flew eight hours per month on sick leave. And of course, they're available and they're going to go to the doctor or something happens to a part of your member. But when they leave, that they decide to leave in good term, those employees aren't okay for those hours that they have.
So if they take a job at another water district, we don't pay them? Why wouldn't?
Why wouldn't?
I don't think they're asking to, right? Good terms would be like, you retired, thank you for your service, here's your sick leave and here's your money.
If you retire, you get paid for that.
But if you leave for any other reason, I wouldn't.
That's exactly what it is. You guys are saying if somebody takes a job, they'll work at a different water district, we will pay them the sick leave they had approved with us before they leave or had their.
Any place that they decide to go.
As long as we haven't fired them, we'll pay them. So somebody could have a serious thing and the only way they can access that thing is to quit, go work somewhere else and then we're gonna pay them out their debt, right?
And they're coming into the, to the hour, suddenly, they're 360 hours, they're not.
360 is the max anybody can bank?
Yeah.
There's, so there's two things that will occur with this decision hypothetically. We decide not to do it and therefore they won't get their 5,400 bucks plus 45 for every year they're there. So we're looking at like six grands, someone to get, ten year guy, the girls. So now I'll give you your six grands to, you know, say throw a big party for your P U V job you just got. So what they're gonna do is just cash in on their sick, they're gonna all of a sudden be sick for the next, whatever, our main powers they got, right? That's what I see educators do all the time, like old coaches, you know, they've been coaching for 30 years and they got all these days. Like, you know what, I'm gonna take my last year off, it's gonna be sick the whole year.
But, but that's how it's always been however, right? We, that's, that, that shouldn't start occurring, because that's what happened.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, just talking here, I don't see what benefits the district goes write big checks to people that leave for other reasons than retirement.
Well, it's a benefit if we look at it at this place, the employee has enough money and a lot of employees just, they have some, for their own. Even for a family, they can get paid for the city.
Which I'm all for.
Yes.
But when it's time for you to leave, if that leaving is retirement, I'm all for writing a check to face your retirement party. If that, you leaving is for any other reason, then thank you for your service.
And you can see it also in their retirement, they say, I wanna try and retire. And that's a benefit, you know, that's also a benefit.
They can retire from here and then go work somewhere else, you mean?
They have the option to withdraw the money, but they won't take, they're gonna have to worry about it. Only their money, but it's a benefit, that's what we bring as well to La Guanamata Water District.
Around the sick leave, can they accumulate vacation too? In other words, do they have to use the vacation?
They have to use vacation.
Otherwise it's.
Carry over?
They don't carry off.
So they get sick leave and vacation, right? Does everybody get the same amount of vacation?
No, it, it, it all depends the years of service.
Okay, what's the minimum?
The minimum is two weeks.
Once you start your automatic two weeks vacation.
You have one, you have two weeks of vacations, one to complete one year of service with La Guanamata.
Okay, so your first year, no vacation?
No vacation.
Your next year too, and what do our most senior veterans have?
That will be more than 20 years of service and that will be 160 hours, 120 days.
So much for four weeks?
Yes, four weeks.
Okay, great, I think that's great, you put in your time and you deserve that. I have a little bit of reservations and since we told me three board members here and since I, right now, it's kind of a no vote for me, I would table it until the other guys are here. But I, I just have some reservations about paying somebody to leave. I mean, in my own business, if somebody leaves, hey, great, I wish you the very best, I hope it's great, but not giving you a bunch of extra money just because you're leaving. It won't work for me, it's a benefit when you work, it's not a benefit when you don't work. That's, that's my thought, I would never incentivize somebody to leave, $5,000 is a lot of money. And I, I worry very much that if somebody has that money and something, gosh, their car breaks down, they need the money, that they wanna keep working here, but they really need that 5,000 bucks, they know they leave on good terms, so. That, I, I worry incentivized, and I think it sounds like the same thing, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Good, you have a copy here, you can change it, you think?
So I would say we take no action and then we bring this up in the next board meeting when it's totally fully attended.
Perfect.
Okay, all I have.
I almost said, or you might be up again?
You know, I, I might say like, hey, maybe a longevity, what's the most anybody has in longevity pay? Only 48 bucks a year, as I always said.
$4, $4 a buck.
So you know, maybe somebody gets a couple hundred bucks in longevity pay, maybe that one I could live with, but hey, I accumulated a bunch of sick pay and I'm gonna go work with P U V and cash in my sick pay. I mean, that, that would, that wouldn't sit well with me if I worked here and I knew my buddy was like, hey man, I just bought a new truck with the money I left to go to P U V.
So again, when you retire, I'm all in. But if you're leaving for any other reason, or if it's an act of God or sickness or something like that, but if, I don't wanna incentivize anybody to leave. That makes sense, if we can look at the wording, that would be something I would be more. That one we have no say, so we got a bold one, I got, thank you.
Great, item seven.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board.
Gomez Lo. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, as I submitted in the board package, a information on EPA new lead and copper rules. And these changes were came about because of exposure the children would get in the drinking water. And what causes that on children is damages to the central and peripheral nervous system, learning disabilities, shorter stature, impaired hearing, impaired formation and function of blood cells. And the goal is to get the lead contaminants in the water system to be at zero. EPA is mandating water utility companies to perform a risk and resource assessment plan, do an inventory of lead service lines, do a plan to replace lead service lines, enhance public communication by informing the public if the contaminants are too high or they have lead service lines, annual notification to homeowners with lead or potential lead service lines, new sampling programs for schools and childcare facilities, which were not included in the past, new sampling methods for estimating lead levels in drinking water system, to perform corrosion control studies and optimize corrosion control treatment on lead service lines. In essence, the district will be responsible to ensure that all the lead service lines are replaced even for private houses. Funding may be available through an authorized grant program pending in Congress under the Water Infrastructure Improvement for Nation. The deadline to complete that requirement is June 17th of 2024 pending legislation. Although we need to start these procedures within the next six months or by December 2021. Having said all of this, we did form a committee, three of the, of the managers, knowing each other from the water plant, Joel from distribution, Lynn, who is in the lab, and myself. And we're looking at all this and we, we did discuss, currently, there are no lead service lines in our district as far as we know, but we are gonna do some testing on several different sites. And I'll let Lynn explain a little bit more about the differences. We did have a program already, a year program, so I'll let her tell you about that program compared to this one.
Good evening. So currently, we're on a reduced monitoring plan, which is 30 samples every three years. And that came about because of our load levels, our results with the levels. With this new change, they're requiring that we do 60 samples the first half of the year, 60 samples the second half of the year, plus we include 20% of elementaries and childcare places. And so we have five years to complete all the elementaries and all the childcare facilities that we have. Then after that one year of 60 samples in the half, 60 in the other half, if our levels are low, below a five, I believe, we can go back to the reduced monitoring of 30 samples every three years, with the exception of finishing up all of the schools and the childcare. In the past, I've gone back through our records and I think the highest that I found was like a five at one of the, one of the holes. So I see that we're gonna be below the actual level, we're gonna be below the trigger level and I'm confident we'll be to a level where we can go back to the reduced monitoring. Unlike Mr. Gomez said, we've gone through our inventory, I don't see any lead service lines. We are gonna dig up some sites just to show proof. We have a good plan going, so I'm confident that we'll be able to meet all the recommendations quickly.
Mr. Gomez, what's required from the board in order for us to take that, is this an action deal or is this more just?
No, at this point, it's just informational, what can be required later from the board is approval for, if, if we are not, for whatever reason, don't qualify on these grants that are coming out. And EPA is telling us that we will be ultimately responsible for ensuring if there are any lead service lines within the community, that we are responsible for replacing. And if we need to, for, for the customer or the house and family can't afford it, then we would have to pay for it. But that's where we were waiting to see what happens with this grant. If we can apply and get some of these grants, they haven't announced yet, when they're coming out, but we are trying to keep an eye out on that.
Should you keep an eye out on the, you know, potential grant money that would be available to us in the event that we have to, you know, change some infrastructure, which could get pricey? And in the interim, we're gonna be sampling, it sounds like doubling down on our samples and the focus is gonna be on, you know, schools and places where children, you know, daycares and such.
And, and I know as Lynn just reported, our samples right now have been very minimum, but we're still getting information on EPA and trying to find out what do they mean by zero lead contaminant? If that is zero lead contaminants, then we can't even afford to have any of these samples that we're currently getting. And which would cost us to have to replace some of these lines. But again, we're still getting information, we just got this last week and that's why I threw that information in the package, but you all could be informed at this point.
I'm glad you did and transparency is king here and so is communication. So no matter what we find, let's be upfront and communicate it and take appropriate action. Because we're talking about kids here, so I think we can all agree on that, but thanks for bringing it to our attention. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. All done?
Yes, sir.
Good, appreciate it. Action item number eight, our district test here.
Hey, good evening, it's the first item on here is the water smart funding opportunity, just that title 16. Water reclamation reuse project, we did submit the grant application, so a full copy was, was here. So you're fully aware of what got submitted and, you know, we got the confirmations, they did receive it and it was pulled by the agency. So, so we're officially in the hat. So so we're officially in the at, you know, through our name and in the, you know, I think we have a pretty good opportunity. We should be hearing a response at some point here in the summer. If we're going to be offered this, you know, positive grant. So it'll be the second one in Texas. Yeah, let's see, I guess first in the valley, Big Spring and Wichita Falls and I believe that's three sites that can think of that are doing this already. And then, you know, but where it's a bit, it's a just handful. And we'd be the first one in the valley at least.
What's this called here, the restoration project?
Yeah, Port Isabel Water Reclamation Facility. And so right now, I mean, the the grant application, we're looking at requesting, you know, 4 million, 83,000. That would be the 25% grant. The 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 portion of work is 12 million, 200,000 is is the local contribution. But out of that, 4.2 million, we've already completed, it was eligible portions of work that were done at the wastewater plant. As part of the modifications that are complete. So the remaining project that's still pending.
8 million range of it.
Yeah, just under 8 million. That would be the the local match if we offer this profit. Which we've approved to a bond already. No, this one, this isn't, because this isn't a tax bond, it would be a, if like, basically, when we did that capital planning workshop and knowing people must have had presented those various revenue notes. I mean, we have to, you know, figure out how to how to cover, cover it in one of those, like, the issuance next fiscal year, that's a fair license.
Maybe we just collect all the relevant evidence.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking in priority wise, like, right now, we have that Isabella Blanca rehab for Headworks as kind of the one for next year. But I mean, if we have to prioritize this ahead of it, you know, we can still make those kinds of stuff.
Okay, great. Is that it? Yeah, but we're, you got some.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the next one, I just gave an update. Since we've completed a, we've got one quarter worth of reports, January, February, March from the water master. And so, yes, there is a water master, he's out of Eagle Pass. And
Want to meet this guy?
And so, yes.
Is it an elected position?
I think it's appointed by the governor. Yeah, that's correct.
Dr. Lala wants to be a future water master.
We're just within a couple of weeks after that, we're already down at 41%. So we're going to keep seeing this this authorization go down. I anticipate it till we're fully prorated. And and so so basically, you know, for the year after the the first three months, we've used 16% of our authorized rights. And so one of the triggers in addition to the Amistad or Falcon reservoirs being below 51% is if we used anything more than 20% of our authorized rights in the in the first quarter. That's another reason to implement our existing stage of drought contingency. So I mean, we're staying in line with the with those conditions. And then the other update is from Bayview Irrigation District. We did get confirmation, they do have 183 acre feet of municipal rights. And at their meeting, they agreed to approve an offer to release those water rights. So so that's something that'll be following up, you know, in a future item as well. So we can, you know, be able to get some more, you know, assurance there to make sure we're going to do our our demands and drought conditions. And and then the third item, there's no backup on it, it's just a general update on our water distribution system. You know, we do have those outflow valves in place, they're they're doing their job. See, I don't know if, no, you're on the line, if you want to bring in some updates for some of the operational improvements that we've we've seen there in the in the water distribution system. Let's see, if you can hear me or.
He's got to put his shirt on.
Oh, he's at a, let's see if he answers. I mean, in the meantime, I mean, I basically, Isaac is here, I'm thinking one street ringwood, they're doing the design at Boulevard. Oh, you there, Noi?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on. So the the valves have been doing great, they're doing their job, opening, closing the tanks. And what they've given us is stability, right? The the pressures, we've seen a more consistent pressure throughout our system. And one of the most, one of the biggest improvements is that at the Andy Bowie Tower, where we would get, you know, essentially 30 pressures stay more consistent at about 45, 46. You know, and that's all the way towards the north end of the island. So we have seen that that keeping the tanks on the mainland pool and and pushing that pressure over there to South Padre Island give us more consistency, more stability pressure wise. And we've even, we've even gotten to the point where, you know, we can turn off high service pumps for a couple hours to to build our clear walls. And we've maintained pressures going out of our system from, you know, at the water plant where we wanted to monitor pressures at about 40 to 45 PSI. So it has given us incredible stability throughout our system.
Thanks, Noi, looking good.
All right. And then, yes, and so as far as the other items that are pending, I think there's a, because our pressure change is so small, we're going to, we need to do some programming changes to force that water to open and flush itself out. And so there's a, there's going to be a minor addition on the on the SCADA project that 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 revision, the program that forces that valve opening close. So that's one item that's pending. And then, of course, the the action request item is is at the high service pumps themselves at water plant two, where we still have that condition without those variable frequency drives. We can either turn them on or off and there's kind of nowhere in between. And so really, even though we've had this this improved operation consistency with the valves doing their job, we're able to maintain storage better in the system. And we still need to take that extra step. We've been able to to kind of get those V F Bs so we can keep that flow rate we're pumping out pretty much at the same as production. So we're not forcing to shut everything on and off and cause all those water water hammer effects. And so that's that's kind of one of the action items, you know, here to amend the existing contract at the Blue Boulevard, which I know we can add it to that in more detail in the action item itself. There's any questions on that? But that pretty much wraps up on the the valve with water distribution. I mean, that that's ongoing as well, we're working in that work to make sure it's in the bid set with the Blue Boulevard to get those valves restored. Yeah, that wraps up the engineers report. Great, I got a question. Okay.
Do we pump all our water rights each year? Is there ever, I guess, is there ever a year where it's like, well, we didn't need it, so we didn't pump it? Let's see. I'm looking, I'm asking because I'm looking at that page. Where it has 2012 through 2021.
Right, and and you can see, I mean, the since we get prorated, it's kind of a loaded question.
Right before the last page.
Yeah.
It is the last page.
Exactly, so you can see, I mean, you know, 5,500, I mean, under, under, under full, under normal conditions, we have the 7,513. So we're nowhere close to using our our diversion authorization when the reservoir levels are full or at 50% or higher. But when that reservoir gets down to 37%, that's when we're cut back to 57, 63. And if you can see, like in 2020, we use 5,800. So, you know, we'd be, we'd have to make up a difference, like, for example, that lease agreement with with baby irrigation, that would close that gap, you know, immediately.
So let's say like, for example, year 2018, we use 52, 76. Did we use all our acre feet or that year? No, we let some of our water rights go into the ocean.
Well, it's, they they just didn't get used, they stayed in storage. They remain in storage without being charged to get started.
So we pumped it into our reserves?
Well, well, no, I mean, storage, I mean Falcon and it stays in the river or stays in Falcon and Amistad.
So we don't get charged.
Correct, correct.
Okay, great.
Talk to electricity, don't you?
Yeah, because our, you got the storage in terms of where we don't get charged in our account is, you know, Falcon and and Amistad.
All set? Nine, consider and discuss for possible improvement. I'm sorry, for possible approval of amendment number one, the SWG Engineering LLC for design services for installation of variable frequency drives for the high service pumps and the water.
Right, well, well, there's, there's two parts to this. I mean, the, oh, the the funding source, because right now, this is not in the, in the, we didn't fund, fund this in the in the current budget. But really, the the way we're proposing this request for, you know, $30,300 of engineering fee plus a construction cost estimate of 250,000 is where if we're going to pull the trigger on this, we're proposing use the unbalanced from the prior year. And that that's basically from discussion with clients, really the recommendation is we're going to commit to this job. I mean, that's, that's really the the avenue, the request. And and basically, the 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 request that's on here for the 30,300, that would get us the V F Bs and the the motors that have been there since 1985 to where they're replaced and compatible with those variable frequency drives. And then there's also another option for the entire motor control center replacement. And that's because, you know, we're talking about a motor control center of the original construction from 1985. It's one of the only components of that water plant two that hasn't been replaced. For the microfiltration, along with the chemical buildup, that's another part that's still in the original motor control center. And and if we, if we include that effort of work, I mean, the engineering would be an additional $10,000. And then the construction would be another 120,000. And and then if if we're sort of take care of the high service pump station as a whole, motor control center plus the V F Bs, we're talking about a project of, you know, 412,000 of really taking care of that entire site and getting it, getting it upgraded for the next 30 years.
Record. Motion approved.
Second. On favor? Item 10, consider and discuss for possible approval of the quarterly investment report for quarter ended March 31st, 2021.
Report shows that our our yields right now are low, that's to be expected with the low interest rate environment that we have currently. As an aside, we do have $3 million that will be coming up for renewal, a CD that's going to be renewed. It's trying to hold it at East West Bank, so they'll be doing solicitations here next few weeks.
What type of?
We usually do like years, the the longest that we do our books. So that's what we did last year, we did a year, we probably do the same.
Is that it?
Yes, you have any questions?
Need to approve or no? Silver.
On favor? Item 11, consider and discuss possible approvals of financial reports for February 2021.
So looking to remarkable here on the on the revenue side. Revenues are starting to diminish a little.
This is the financial report through what date?
Is through February 2020, the end February. The the these reports come out a little bit later because of credit card expenses and such. They come in later in the months, so I can't get into you right away. The revenues come in earlier in the month, but then the some of the expenses such as credit cards come in later.
We should approve.
I think it's an, is it an acknowledgement of actions?
There's a group.
Our second.
On favor? Item 12, consider and discuss for possible approval, the procurement of material for water plant two fence repair.
Fence.
I'm recommending no action, I won't bring back this item in a future meeting.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Take no action.
I'm all in.
Item 13, consider and review expenditures from April 1st through April 15th.
I acknowledge.
Acknowledged. Acknowledged by myself as well, and pending anything else, can we adjourn? Yes? Want it?
Motion approve or motion to adjourn.
You gotta hold it together.
No.
Motion, you second that?
Second.